Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge, Bender, Mertzick, McDonald, Henry, Finsland.
Here.
Herrick, McKenzie, Dahlbeck, Nowicki.
Just a matter of, I'd like to announce I will retain my right to vote at the council meetings even while I'm presiding.
Item number three is appointment of interim mayor. Appointment by the common council, if desired, of an interim mayor to fulfill the duties of mayor for the remainder of the current mayoral term ending April 19th, 2011.
Motion made by Counselor Bridge and seconded by Counselor Bender and Bridge. Okay. Is there any further comment or questions? Counselor Olson.
What do we do if we get into a situation at this point in time? If we get to a five-five tie on an issue?
If it's a five-five tie on an issue, the chair will not, will just vote as a counselor and that'll be the way it will, probably would not pass for lack of a majority then.
And I had one other concern too. By leaving this vacant, I think it's a little bit of a reflection on the city of Superior that we're a city of 27 roughly thousand people and we're choosing just to leave things go as is. My concern is in this timeframe, if there are issues that have to be approved, if there are items that are important enough that we would need a tie, vote broken. In the fact that us as counselors, in the way that the city is structured, the people, the public is number one, the council is number two, the mayor is number three, and the department heads are number four, in that order. My concern is that, I feel that maybe we should have the whole city council acting as mayors because it's our duty to uphold the constitution of the city, the state, and the United States. And with that being said, we'd be doing our due diligence as counselors to represent our city in a fair manner, in an even manner, and be able to represent all the committees, all the departments that, if there's any issues that come up. We've got a couple in committee right now that are gonna, are a little bit contentious that we should be making decisions and not possibly stalling the acts of the city, the decisions of the city, especially when last spring, some of us counselors didn't believe in the process for committees and President and Vice President, we got accused of stopping government. I think by electing the common council as the interim mayor, we'd be pushing forward with this and again be doing due diligence to the city and the residents of Superior.
Are there further comments from any of the counselors? Counselor Mertzick?
I have a question, I hope somebody can answer, maybe Froggy can help me with this. If, I have a concern rather, that if there was a catastrophic event in Superior, like an emergency, like a citywide emergency type thing, I would, I would assume that the mayor would be calling the shots initially on a situation like that. And what's, God forbid something like that would happen, how would we, what would be the chain of command for negotiating a catastrophe if we didn't have an acting mayor?
Well, by statute, the council president would take on the duties and responsibilities of a mayor in the absence of the mayor.
Back in 2007, I did participate in the incident command training that was offered here by the US Coast Guard, and I think I understand the structure of delegation of authority. It is not delegated to the most senior or the most high-ranking individual, but the most capable individual in the situation that requires it. That's a decision that is usually made by our police officer or police chief, our fire chief, with conjunction with the mayor, and whoever happens to be the most capable or of handling that situation will be the person in charge of it. That's just the way incident command is broken down, and then there's a chain of command that follows.
Thank you. Chief Peters, can you elaborate on that or explain more? Because that was a concern that I've received from my constituents, the main concern.
Well, Council President Finsland is correct. He has been to that training we have as police chief and fire chief. In fact, our fire chiefs had even more experience than I have with it, but we think we're very well-prepared to handle any emergencies that would come up and function and communicate with the council if those things did happen. I'm satisfied we'd be just fine.
See no other lights on from the council?
Yeah, just one question, Bob. Just, just a question for you basically. You know, being the president of the council, are you, are you kind of aware what's going on within the department heads right now as far as any, any projects or anything like that coming up?
As much as I've been made aware of them by the department heads, yes, and I have attended the department head meetings on a regular basis along with Counselor Bridge. And I think we're well-informed by those people, and I'm nothing but convinced that they're capable of handling the situation. I think that a mayor's position as an administrative head is an important position, but I think we can get along with the situation where it exists right now, and we have very capable people handling each and every department in the city. Should anything come up that requires, let's say a mayor's vote on a contract issue or something like that, we'll just refer it automatically right to the Human Resource Committee and deal with it at that level rather than going through a stage two of grievance. It'd just be a sort of matter of passing it on to the HRC committee. Okay, thank you. And I think that's the way most of our government has been done in the past, is through the committee structure. Counselor Olson.
Would we be going to Jeff Vito to direct us in any of these issues? I think he would be, I mean, he's been here, he's got the knowledge of every department, how they work, how the city functions. Would that be an option as well within a state statute or a city statute, whatever we've got here?
I've spoken with Jeff about this, and of course, he'd be a person to consult in any situation that required information from him, as would Gene as our finance director or whoever else you need from whichever entity of government we need to have consultation, but certainly wouldn't make any decisions on my own without consulting with the people that have the most knowledge. If there are further questions, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Item four is the approval of the January 4th, 2011, regular council meeting minutes.
Motion by Counselor McKenzie and seconded by Counselor?
No, it was actually Dahlbeck.
Dahlbeck.
It's Esther.
Bender. Okay, Dahlbeck and Bender. It's hard to tell from here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing, an ordinance introduced by the Department of Planning and Development to adopt the 2010 through 2030 Comprehensive Plan of the City of Superior.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this motion? So, pardon? Speak to it now, Jason?
I can speak to it afterwards, that's fine.
We'll call it three times. Anyone to speak in favor or opposition to this motion, of this public hearing? And the second time, anyone in favor or opposed to this public hearing? Would like to speak in favor or opposition? And for a third time, anyone who speak in favor or in opposition to the ordinance? If not, Jason?
Counselor President, Finsland, thank you, and counselors, thank you as well. This, this plan is kind of a work of in progress. It's a, it's a flexible plan. I appreciate the comments that you have expressed through email and in person. I will be cleaning this thing up to make it a little bit nicer and a little bit more presentable, and Counselor Bender pointed out a couple of things as well as Counselor Herrick, and we will, we've also found a couple of typos and things of that nature. Content for the most part will stay the same. As most of you know, this is an update. We have more or less kind of fit a lot of the recommendations that were made in 1998 because things haven't changed a whole heck of a lot, and have kind of reworked them with some additional, some additional information that we acquired working through with Douglas County on some things. As I've talked to some of you counselors, we will probably be bringing this back to you in the next six months or so because we will be updating some of the numbers. These are working off 2,000 census numbers, and we'll be bringing this back to you to update some of those. I don't, won't see a drastic change, but we want to do that as part of the record and be able to through that, go through plan commission and things of that nature. But my plan is to have a finished copy for you at, in the, at one of the February council meetings, so you can have it, study it, apply it, and go from there. I also want to, you know, take this time to thank Douglas County. We were partners on, on getting the comprehensive plan grant a couple of years ago. I want to thank Steve Rannenberg and, and him for keeping track of this thing and, and kind of putting up with a couple of our delays that, that we've had on it. So, if anybody has any questions for me, we can certainly do that and, and go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Herrick? Anyone have any questions? Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, Jason, I guess more of a, more of a comment. Of course, you know, like you said, this is a comprehensive plan over 20 years and, you know, you're going to be tweaking it and, you know, getting back to us at all this. And, you know, 20-year plan, as you know, stems out there a ways. I'll be in the home by then, but anyways, I like some of the things. I've read through this, I haven't read every word, but one of the things that stood out to me was the historic preservation ordinance that you're having here, and I think it's great, if I could just read the first part where it says, "Historic preservation ordinances can aid local units of government protecting and enhancing key historic and cultural resources in their communities." And I think that's, that would be great to start a new trend, I think, here, here in this city and preserve those types of properties and, and buildings. So, thank you, Jason.
I have to read it again. 5.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Department of Planning and Development to adopt the 2010, 2000 through 2030 Comprehensive Plan of the City of Superior.
Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck and a second by Counselor Henry. Any further comment or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion's passed.
Item six is a consent agenda.
Motion by Counselor Henry, seconded by Counselor Bender. Is there anyone that wishes to pull any of the items? I have a request from the public to speak to one of the issues, so I'd like to pull item 6.10.
Bob, could I pull 16 as well?
Okay, you're pulling 16.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's what I was.
Oh, you, you, okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the, I guess we have the motion to approve the balance of, okay, all in favor of the balance of the consent agenda? Aye, opposed?
Item 6.10 is Counselor, Counselor Bridge is requesting review of the City Code, Chapter 54, Article 4, Key Boxes, and it's a referral to the Public Safety Committee.
We have a person sign up to speak, John Maham, would like to speak to this issue?
Mr. McKenzie.
Okay, Mr. McKenzie?
Yeah, I just, just a comment, I'm just, I'm glad that Counselor Bridge is bringing this up. I know there's been lots of concerns about this, and so I think, you know, the public safety welcomes this issue coming to the, to the committee. I'd encourage all the people that this affects to be there, and that meeting's going to be February 9th at 5:00, when this gets moved to that committee. So, anyways, thanks, thanks Tom for bringing this up.
Mr. Maham, would you like to speak to the council?
Real quick, I own a company called Great Lakes Electrical Equipment in North End, and one of the concerns I have is putting a key to my business on the outside of it. There isn't, you know, the Fire Department, when they proposed, stated that there hadn't been an incident in the country where criminals successfully broke into a Knox box. That was not accurate. In 2006, in the city of San Francisco, there were three people who broke into a Knox box, took the keys, entered a complex, took the key from the Knox box from one of the offices, unlocked the door, took a safe out, and removed it from the premises and broke into it. The city of Kirkwood, Washington, and Bellevue, Washington have issued an alert to commercial property owners that criminals are targeting Knox boxes. To me, the way it was issued or written is that this occurred multiple times. Where my business is, you know, nights and on weekends, it's not very, there aren't a lot of people around. Over the last 20 years, we've been broken into probably 30 times, people stealing cop or lawyer. In the last summer, we got broken into twice. During one of these, in that period of time, there has only been one incident where the criminal was apprehended and tried and convicted. And in that instance, I caught the guy. You know, I've lost tens of thousands of dollars. These Knox boxes, with a sledgehammer and a hydraulic ram, I can be into a Knox box within five minutes. The response, you know, if you don't have an alarm, even if the police get an alarm, you know, it's tough for them to get there in a timely manner. As a landlord, I guess I, I don't know how many there are, but there are probably a thousand Knox boxes that are required in the city of Superior. The, the ordinance is written to specifically name the company Knox Box. There's a company, if you go on the internet, there's a company that puts out a comparable product called Eagle. Knox box is approximately $350 per unit. This Eagle company is $95. I guess my question is why was Knox specifically, specifically named in the ordinance, and why wasn't it put out for a public bid? You know, if you take a thousand of them, whatever figure it is, you're talking $250 per unit. If there is a thousand of them, that's, the ordinance is causing the city, the citizens of the city of Superior, the businesses, to spend an extra $250,000. If you take a look at the security of an apartment building, now, you have the key to an apartment in the Knox box. Now, if you, if you set the premise that I can be into the Knox.
Three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The business before us is whether or not to refer this to the Public Safety Committee. And do we have a motion to refer this to item 6.10 to Public Safety? Motion by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Dahlbeck. It will be referred to the Public Safety Committee. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? It will be referred to the Public Safety Committee on February 9th at 5:00 PM, and I suggest that anyone have any concerns for that would be appropriate to show up at the committee meeting at that time.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to set a public hearing the first day of May, 2011, at 6:30 to request comments on the community development needs and fair housing choice.
Motion by Counselor Henry, seconded by Counselor Dahlbeck. Herrick. Okay, Counselor Herrick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's passed.
Item 10.2 is a resolution introduced by Counselor Bender concerning the Tucson shooting.
Motion by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Bender. Any others, anyone who should speak to this issue?
I'd just like to read it, since, since it is a resolution, if nobody hears it, then what was the purpose of writing this? And anyway, I'll, I'll just skip to the important parts here. It says, "Whereas the shooting of Congressman Giffords, the killing of six people, and the injuring of many more have devastated the whole nation, therefore be it resolved that the Superior City Council pledges its support, thought, and prayers to the families of the victims and the city of Tucson."
Anyone else care to comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 10.3 is a resolution introduced by Counselor Bender concerning the earthquake in Haiti.
Motion by Counselor Bender, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Does anyone care to make any comments, or do you care to read this motion?
I certainly would, thank you. "Whereas the one-year anniversary of the Haitian earthquake was on January 12, 2011, and the efforts to recover are ongoing now and will continue for years to come, therefore be it resolved that the Superior City Council pledges its continuing support, thought, and prayers to the Haitian people and the many aid workers who work on a daily basis in the recovery efforts."
Anyone else care to make any comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion's passed.
Item 12.1, Cody Androski, Team Polar Bear Six, is requesting the City of Superior waive fees for the second annual 2011 Polar Bear walk run at Great Lakes Elementary School.
It's kind of hard to see. I think it was Counselor Dahlbeck made the motion, and Counselor McDonald made the second. Okay. Does anyone care to comment on this? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Motion's passed.
Item 12.2, the Metropolitan Interstate Council is presenting its findings of the East Second Street Corridor Study.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Bridge and seconded by Counselor Bender. All those in favor, say aye. And then we have a presentation?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a presentation to be, we will approve it, and we will still have our presentation.
Yeah.
And Jason Serk has some comments to introduce.
Thank, thank you, Counsel President Finsland. Robert Hurling and Ron Chica, Ron is the director and Robert is a planner at the Metropolitan Interstate Council, are going to do a short presentation on, on some of the key elements of the Second Street Corridor Study. Myself and Jeff Getzman sat on a committee of, there's a few business owners and things of the like to kind of help with this. Robert did a presentation, a small, very small presentation of this at the TAC meeting today. It was approved, and the folks, counselors on the mic will, will see this for approval tomorrow as well. So, Robert, take it away.
Okay, as Jason said, our, our agency did a study of the East Second Street Corridor in Superior. Initially, we, we were focusing on, on access issues related to the number of, of direct accesses onto the roadway, but as you'll see in a few slides, some of our recommendations have more to do with non-motorized transportation on the corridor. So basically, we looked at this section of East Second Street or this section of US Highway 2 and 53, which constitutes East Second Street and East Superior. It's approximately 4.4 miles, and we sort of looked at the interplay of land use patterns and transportation patterns within kind of that 300-foot of either side of the roadway. Some of the study objectives were to verify existing traffic conditions, including the heavy truck traffic, compare patterns, current patterns of land use and transportation, and sort of do our best to estimate what future growth potential is there and what the resulting transportation patterns would be with build-out scenarios. And then, we hoped to identify potential deficiencies in capacity, operations, accessibility, safety, and then from there on, recommend some improvements. The way that we went about this is that we kind of took that 4.4 miles and we looked at how it changed as you drove down it. There's a number of variations in, in the types of land use patterns. We broke it up into, to 10 different context zones, and then we sort of studied conditions within each of those zones. And as you'll see when we get to some of my final slides here, we, in our document, kind of went to the, to great effort to try and make some of the recommendations location-specific and context-specific. The map on the bottom here, apparently there's some incompatibility with the fonts or the graphics that I put. These, these red lines here are the traffic signals that exist on the corridor. And this purple line represents the centerline median that prevents left turns. And basically, what I wanted to show with this is that we kind of paid attention to how the traffic controls changed along the corridor too. The areas, coincidentally, that, that don't have, well, first of all, there's not a lot of signalization on, on those 4.4 miles. The areas that don't have the centerlane median, raised median, are those, typically those areas with commercial land uses, allowing for, for turning movements into and out of those businesses. But on the flip side, the more turning movements and the more vehicles that you have in an area, the increase in potential for traffic collisions and, and other issues, as well as potential for, for traffic delay. So, we kind of took a look, a fine look at those different areas of commercial, those commercial pockets, and kind of assessed safety and congestion in those areas. So, many of you who know, are familiar with this corridor, it is what we call a principal arterial. Its primary function is to serve the movement of lots of traffic through, through the area as efficiently as possible, but it also, East Second Street also serves as a local street, providing direct accesses to the local businesses and, and other land uses right along the corridor. This, there is, as I said, there's areas that have a raised median, but there's quite a significant chunk of the roadway that has the centerline two-way left turn lane, which, which facilitates those left turn movements, but for right turns, there, there is not enough right-of-way on the corridor to put in right-hand turn bays. So, when you have things like heavy trucks that are slowing down to, if you have a car that's making a turn in and, in or out of a business, and you have a, a heavy truck in the flow and it slows down and it has to have time to accelerate, you see the potential issues for congestion as traffic volumes go up. So, we, that's another aspect that we studied. As I mentioned, there's little room for expansion. It's kind of, the roadway is kind of built as wide as it can be built, and there's not, as I said, there's not a lot of room to put in other features that would mitigate congestion issues with turning vehicles. As many of you are also aware, there's, there is high speeds on the roadway. I mean, it's posted for 35 miles per hour, but we checked, we did some surveying of speeds out there, and we found that average speed is above 40 miles an hour, and we saw a significant amount of traffic that was approaching more like 45 miles per hour. And this is typically during those non-peak hours of the day. We did, part of our study was also to kind of go out and seek some comment from the public and some of the business owners and residents along the roadway, and speeds were a concern. Residents along the roadway voiced some, some concerns about not having the ability to really safely cross the corridor by, by foot or bike. So, we kind of assessed the corridor in that vein as well, and we did determine that it is a difficult environment for, for non-motorized movement, specifically across the corridor. This is, this poses a challenge because we also found that conditions on the roadway did not really, they, they don't warrant additional signals on the roadway, and, and signals do offer a one-way to help facilitate the movement of, of beds and, and stuff across the roadway. And what I mean by, by signals aren't warranted is that federal highways and administration and the, 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 Ashtoe? No. Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices has a series of criteria, criteria that you need to meet in order to really warrant the installation of signals, and along the corridor, these, a lot of these intersections that, that aren't, are unsignaled are not meeting those warrants, so, which has its pluses and minuses. You don't want to put a number of signals there if, if the goal is to move lots of traffic efficiently and, and not delay the amount of traffic. One other, the. One other, the final point on this slide is that reconstruction is not really planned for until beyond 2020. So, there is quite a lot of time between now and then that the road is pretty much going to be the way it is. And so, if the goal is to make the facility safer or more inviting for cross movements of bikes and peds, typically, we, as you'll see, I have some proposed solutions to that, but that would require reconstruction of the roadway, and that's a long way out. So, the name of the game at this point is really to see what can be done with the facility as it currently is. Study findings, we really found that there is no capacity issues at present. There's quite a bit of capacity available even during peak hours of traffic. And we did our best to do some projections, some growth projections, and take a look at if there was a lot more build-out on the roadway, would, how would that affect capacity? And it really doesn't look like there's any future potential capacity issues either. Presently, there's no operational issues. We didn't see a lot of delay at the signals and other non-signalized intersections. We took a look at crash statistics. It doesn't look like, although there are some high-crash locations along the corridor, particularly the signalized intersections of 18th Avenue East and 39th Avenue East, Belknap, and that's just because of the nature of signalized intersections, that you have a lot of crashes, because you have, tend to have people running lights and stuff. But no particular location along the corridor jumped out as critical. And there's, the state has some critical crash rate values that we kind of assessed against, and nothing stood out. So, really, what was kind of left after our analysis is that conditions for automobile traffic are pretty good along the corridor. But there is a potential amount of trip demand from a lot of the land uses along the corridor. And those trip demands are also, they also attract pedestrian trips. So, I guess what I'm trying to say here is that there is the potential demand. People do want to be crossing this corridor. And some of the pictures that I have on this slide actually show, the top one does show someone crossing the corridor at 39th, or near 39th Avenue East. There's also, part of East Second Street is a DTA transit route, so if you have someone that is leaving their house and picking up the bus and traveling to a location and coming back, at least one of those times, they're crossing the street. You also have the Osage Trail and some recreational uses along the east side of the corridor, but a lot of the residential is on the west side of the corridor. So, residents, local residents that want to access that facility also have to cross the street. And then that final picture is showing that you do have some patterns of higher-density multifamily dwellings that are being built along the corridor there. So, again, just showing you the potential for future, a future increase in demand for pedestrians crossing the roadway. Something is wrong with this slide, and I apologize. This was the general recommendations. There was about six of them. And what I meant by general recommendations is that they apply to the entire corridor. So, there should be a series of six bullet points up here. The first one is the one that I, is kind of our strong main recommendation, our plan, and that is that the city of Superior, when it comes time to taking a look at their land use ordinances, consider updating their land use ordinance, inserting some language that is specific to the East Second Street Corridor, and is kind of aimed at, at sort of directing development patterns in a certain way, in particular, speaking to access management issues. I guess what we want to see is that, in the event of future development, either redevelopment or new development, that some language or some ordinance be in place that kind of, sort of directs best management practices, and tries to minimize unnecessary access points, maybe look for opportunities to take businesses and consolidate access points. Because the deal here is that the more points, direct points of access, and the more, the denser, more densely packed these access points are, the more congestion issues you have, the more potential safety issues you have. So, again, our kind of primary recommendation was that the city consider finding ways to strengthen their land use ordinances with specific, language specific to East Second Street, that would kind of address development patterns, specifically land, specifically access, direct accesses. Also, then, for sort of a short-term recommendation, we have, we propose that the city put some more frequent placement of speed, posted speed limit signs, just sort of as a reinforcer for drivers as they're driving along the corridor, because what we're finding is that the road, the design of the roadway actually facilitates or kind of queues drivers to drive faster than that posted speed. We call it the design speed. The design speed of the roadway actually is designed more to facilitate speeds at 40 miles an hour or higher. And yet, we're trying to keep speeds at 35 miles per hour, which is good in terms of pedestrians, because pedestrian, if a pedestrian is struck by a car, if it's over 40 miles an hour, you have an 80% chance of fatality. So, the higher the speed, the more likely you're going to have a severe crash with pedestrians. Or conversely, the less inclined a pedestrian is going to be to cross the roadway. So, again, the recommendation is to have more frequent placement of road, speed limit signs to kind of queue drivers to keep checking their speeds and keeping their speeds low. We also recommend that there be a little bit more frequent placement of the truck. Trucks use left lane signs to kind of keep, improve compliance with that ordinance as well. We did, when we were out doing our fieldwork, we noticed a lot of trucks in both lanes. So, there's maybe things that can be done with trying to queue trucks to comply with that ordinance better. We also are recommending that the city consider beefing up enforcement or enforcement of speed along the corridor, or choosing to take the strategy of doing targeted wave enforcements. And the purpose of this would be more or less to kind of just, again, be a reinforcer to people that, oh, you know, speeds are important to the city here, and we should, you know, be checking how fast we're going as we drive along there. Kind of a midterm recommendation for the city is that they consider doing something like what's shown in these pictures here with the pedestrian crossings. Right now, you have several signs along the corridor indicating that there's, this is an area where peds are crossing, but we figure that you would be better served by designating crossing areas, that you put higher visibility crossings with the arrow there that indicates that this is a designated crossing area. And then you pair it with these high-visibility ladder crosswalks. And that picture there just kind of shows how that tends to stick out and make that area more visible, and queue drivers that this is a place where pedestrians would be crossing. And then, that picture at the far lower right is kind of, when it comes time to reconstruct the roadway, we're proposing that the city, along with WISDOT, consider sort of integrating raised medians with pedestrian refuges in there. So, what essentially we'd be doing is providing a pedestrian, you'd be shortening the length that the pedestrian needs to cross the roadway. And so, they would, instead of having to try and cross four lanes of traffic at once, they would have that opportunity to take refuge in the middle of the roadway. Again, road reconstruction isn't going to happen for a long time out, so I think that allows a lot of time for some planning and further consideration of some alternative designs to the roadway as it currently exists. And finally, the document, as I said, breaks the corridor up into several different segments. And what we had done is, we had sort of, in the recommendations sections, we each have a page, one page, or a couple of pages for each of those segments. And that's, this is just to illustrate what's in the document. We have these, a series of these maps that are corresponded with these tables of recommended improvements. We did our best to try to estimate what those costs would be, who would be responsible for those improvements, and potential federal funds that they, that the city or WISDOT could employ to help fund some of these proposed improvements. And so, with that, I will just say, for those of you who are interested in looking at all those finer bits of detail, our plan can be found at the website, www.dsmic.org/EastSecondStreet. And I will take a moment to entertain any questions or comments, after I say thank you very much for having the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Hurling. I see one light on, a couple lights on. We'll start with Esther, Councilor Dahlbeck, and then we'll go to Mr. Henry next.
Well, Chuck List first, if he wants to go.
Oh, okay.
Chuck, you want to go?
Okay.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Yes, sir. I just had one question. In reading through the material that was provided to us, I came across a section of, I used land or road, whatever you want to call it, but I'm not too familiar with that. I think it was out around maybe 20th, 25th Avenue East or something, where they talked about a pathway possibly going underneath the road or a viaduct or something like that. Now, maybe you could describe exactly what that is, if it's for pedestrians, or if it's for, you know, three-wheelers, or whatever that is, you know? But I was kind of, I was kind of wondering if there's more areas like that where a spot could be designated to go underneath, maybe another viaduct or something like that. And in addition to that, I know in driving on the freeway over in Duluth, there's one area where you've got an overpass for pedestrians. There's at least one, where you've got an area for overpass for pedestrians and for bicycle riders. And I was wondering, is that something that you looked into on our highway here? And would that be feasible, or is that something that's too costly, or someone else would rule it out, or?
I think we kind of were the latter. We were thinking that where we would want to have a bridge like that, a lot of the land use isn't necessarily set up to support that. I mean, I'm thinking of an area like 22nd Avenue West, where the McDonald's and the Culvers are. I guess the potential's there to put a bridge, but, you know, talking with our study, the steering committee for the study, I think that was one of those things that just, it really, it might have been mentioned, but it didn't really get discussed too much. Just in terms of the underpass, proposed underpasses, there was a couple of them that I think I proposed in the study. Those segments or those parcels are already owned by the city, and so you wouldn't have to purchase any land to do those. I think that this previous slide showed one of them, and maybe this is the one that you were talking about. Currently, that black line that you see there, this is sort of the 26th Avenue East, there's a, there's already a paved tra, pa, excuse me, there's already a paved path going underneath the viaduct here by the railroad beds, connecting to the Osage Trail. And I guess for this, in this instance, what we were saying here is that if you are a pedestrian moving laterally along the East Second Street Corridor, in order to access that underpass and cross the street that way, you'd have to go several blocks out of your way to wrap around and connect to that trail. And so, we're saying here, with the land that the city does currently own, there is potential to lay more trail, more direct connections to that underpass, so that people could utilize that from, traffic, pedestrian traffic from East Second Street could utilize that connection directly.
And you're saying that there's a couple more spots that you mentioned in your, in your study? What would be the location of those?
31st Avenue East was the other one, because that, there is a bridge there that goes over the Nijami, and there looks to be some land that would be wide enough underneath that bridge that would, again, provide an underpass connection to the Osage Trail from, to the residential neighborhoods on the other side. And I would have to say that, you know, out of all the recommendations, that's probably the one that is the pie in the sky. I mean, it really requires, I think it's going to require, if people were serious about it, it would require some further study to make sure that, you know, the land that's there could even support a trail. The slope's not too big. And that was truly beyond the scope and budget of our study. But I guess our recommendation at this point is to possibly look at putting an underpass there. And this, again, would be sort of a midterm or a mid-range recommendation to help facilitate safe crossings across the roadway. Until, you know, the road is reconstructed, then that maybe would be a location that would actually be better suited by a raised median and a pet refuge.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Dahlbeck?
I was just wondering, in your study, if you considered the safety of the pedestrian walking along on the sidewalk, between, alongside the road and the sidewalk? There is no, nothing between the sidewalk and that road to protect them at all. Did you consider anything about their safety when you did the study? Or is it just crossing the road?
I think what, from where our agency is, we're charged with kind of trying to look at things from a multimodal approach, and take into account transportation needs beyond that of just the automobile. And so, I think what was jumping out at us is that there's accessibility issues here. You know, we did our best to look at safety-related data or records, and nothing, again, jumped out as significant. I do know that there are concerns with that type of design, having the sidewalk right next to the roadway. And I think that the perception is, if you are walking on a corridor like East Second Street, that having the sidewalks right next to the roadway, while there is these heavy trucks traveling down the outer lane or the right lanes, is that, it feels unsafe, or it is uncomfortable. But with that said, again, there isn't, there really is no right-of-way to do much in the way of expanding or changing the current facility as it is. You know, I, so we just kind of didn't go, didn't go there in terms of taking a look at the possibility of moving the sidewalk.
But you would, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, we did, we did note, as you may have seen in some of the recommendations, some of the, in the recommendations section, in some of the sections, we noted where there was not sidewalk, and we did make some recommendations that sidewalk be installed, so that the connection is there.
But you would agree that it is a safety hazard, the way that is laid out?
I would say, yes, I would agree. That my perception is that it is, to have what's either there right now, and/or to have the alternative of having a median or a boulevard, a grass boulevard in between that separates the sidewalk from the roadway, I would prefer the latter. My perception is that it's safer. I do believe that there's been studies that show that that's a safer alternative. We did not, we did not look at that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Mitchik?
You'd mentioned that the study or the research indicated that there were no critical high-crash locations. And you also mentioned that you talked to some of the residents around there on Highway Two. But I've had some complaints, actually, from your district, Tom. I think we spoke once before, there's an intersection where the skating rink is and the Franklin Courts apartment buildings. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And there's, I believe there's actually been crashes there. And I can't say how many or how serious, but I think there was actually even a fatality there at one point in time. And I'm under the impression that that would definitely be considered a high-crash location. What did you find out, or what, what do you think of that?
That area, or that segment, didn't, did not pop up as one that stood out. And I guess I should just say that how we kind of assess crash statistics is we kind of, we look at the number of crashes and compare it to the volume of traffic that's going through the intersection or the segment. And we come up with kind of a rate. And we compare that with other rates throughout the state or throughout the region of similar type roadways or intersections. And usually, at the state level, there are some critical rates. There's rates that we can compare to and say, oh, this seems above average. And none of them were excessively above average. I think the one that was above average is maybe the intersection of 18th Avenue East. And again, that's a signalized intersection. It's got a lot of traffic in it. I guess you could say that you would expect to see a lot of vehicle collisions there. The location that you're talking about specifically, we did notice that there were a significant amount of crashes in the vicinity of 39th Avenue East, which is, you know, just down, down from where you're speaking of. And sort of in that general segment of the corridor, there, that's the segment of the corridor that's seen the only two pedestrian-related crashes in five years, the five years that we looked at. So, I guess what I'm saying is the So, so I guess, what I'm saying is that, looking at the crash statistics, things don't look out of hand there. But again, there's probably, um, anecdotally, there's probably been some instances that indicate that that's an area of concern. Um, and I do believe that in our recommendation section, we have, um, we have called for some higher visibility pedestrian crossings in the area as lo, as well as, um, some more, placing more, uh, speed limit signs in the area, so.
Councilor Olson?
Robert, on this, uh, long-term planning, um, is that any of the anticipation that Highway Two is going to be forty years old? Is, was that brought into, any, anywhere into the study and as to, typically a highway is based on about a forty-year lifespan, uh, a lot more heavy truck traffic. I guess my question would be in, in, when we're looking at short range, mid-range, and long range, if, uh, I don't see it today, but if DOT dollars were to free up and, uh, matching funds from the city, is this a possibility that we could bring the safety issue from long-term to midterm like we've done on some other projects? And we, we did it with stimulus projects, you know, that, uh?
I think, uh, anything is, anything is possible.
Okay.
And I, and again, that is one of the reasons why we, we do these studies, is so that we have something, um, on the books or on the shelf, so to speak, that we can point to and say, um, you know, in the event that money is available, here are some things that we've already identified that could be done.
And then, just one other issue with the Hollywood-style sidewalks out on East Second Street, their road sidewalk, Noah Boulevard, um, the right-of-ways with the DOT, Wisconsin DOT and the, and the federal because it's, it's a US highway. When you're talking about land acquisition, is that within the right-of-ways of the, the state and federal highway there, or does, I guess, does the city own anything right there? Jason, you can?
Uh, no. I think if you're acquiring hi, if you're trying, acquiring more land for right-of-ways, you'd be looking at purchasing land from private landowners is probably what you'd be looking at. We might own some snippets around there, but, uh, for the most part, you'd be looking at acquiring, uh, private land for, for additional, you know, things of that nature.
Uh, the, down from the, let's just say from the Nijami River up to Thirty-seventh Avenue East, is that, is it city property on the east side?
There, there is some city property in there, it's wet, uh, very wet.
Yeah.
But yeah, um, there, I think most of that is city and/or Douglas County property.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bender?
Yes, Robert, I just wanted to thank, I also have a question too, but I just wanted to thank you and Ron for attending tonight to explain, and for explaining this, and Dan and Denise and I get to hear an update, um, usually at every MIC meeting, and there will be one tomorrow night, but at the last meeting, you'd explained, I know the question would come up, well, why not more stop signs and why not more traffic lights? Do you want to maybe speak to that for a second or two? Or, or a minute or two would be fine, too.
Um, well, I kind of alluded to it earlier, we, we looked at, uh, signal warrants, um, and, and just things don't seem to, to warrant, uh, placing other signals there. That could change. Um, you know, if you get a certain development in the area that draws a lot more traffic, you know, those warrants might be exceeded, um, or met. So, uh, it's not that, that signals are out of the question, um, and I know that there is some interest from business owners to, to see some signals at some of the intersections there. Uh, uh, but I guess, from, from what our, our study, um, it, in conjunction with, with these warrants, I, we just don't, don't see the, the need for signals at this, at any of those locations at, at this time. Um, stop signs, I'm not, I, I'm not sure if I remember a discussion about stop signs at the, the MIC meeting, but, um, traffic control in general, um, uh, you know, it doesn't seem like, like it's a big, big need, and, uh, maybe Ron has something to add here.
Thanks, and thanks for the time here, um, for, uh, to present this, and Robert got through it very, very well. I, I just thought I would add that, kind of the key point is it's a fine balance in any of our work that we do between traffic flow and congestion. So, the more you're putting, I mean, this just kind of makes sense, I just, but it just felt like walking up here and at least saying, first of all, thanks, but, um, that-
You are the boss, so.
Yeah, yeah. Robert's done a good job with it, I'm here just sort of as oversight. Um, the, the more you put in lights, obviously you take away the integrity of that roadway. That's really the key thing. The DOT, it's a US highway, it's a through route, as you can put more lights in, you're taking away, time is money, you're taking away the effectiveness of that road as it's supposed to function as a through route. Now, it's a delicate balance, there's a couple lights there, should development pop up, you're going to maybe have to look at another light or two, but it's very key as to where you put those, and especially on a road of this nature, you have to be very, you need to follow warrants to some degree to, uh, to mandate throwing a light in, in there. Otherwise, you put one there, you know, they'll be blown and you'll have even some more trouble, so that's, that just, Robert, I kind of made that point, but I thought I would add that.
Thanks.
Councilor Olson?
Ron's long as you're there, if there isn't enough safety warrants on East Second Street, can I borrow them for Fifty-eighth and Tower?
I'll try that one, Dan. You're going to go for that one, yeah? Point noted.
Any further questions? Councilor McDonald?
I just remember at the meeting that if you, you had mentioned if you did put more lights in, it would be more hazardous, be more dangerous. That's what I think you were getting at. That's what I think you had mentioned. I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, just like Robert's mentioned, crashes happen at signalized intersections. You put more signalized intersections in, you have some safety to a degree, but you're going to see a few other problems because of it. It's not that they're going to just all of a sudden, you know, giant increase, but it's just what occurs, that's the points that they occur at.
Any further questions? No, I'd like to thank Mr. Chico and Mr. Hurling for their fine presentation and for coming here tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on.
Okay. Item twelve point three is a communication from Don Rahela requesting consideration to fill the spring, April-spring ballot with non-binding advisory questions.
Motion by Councilor Dahlbeck and a second by Councilor Olson. Bender? Olson, okay. Olson, I don't know, you and me? Thank you, appreciate that. Yes? You have got it? Oh, okay, motion made to receive and file, is there further question?
Was there somebody assigned to speak to this?
I don't believe so. Councilor Kennedy has his light on.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask Terry, um, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what they're asking for here, but I, is this unusual and has this been done before, and what would be the cost with something like this?
Um, yeah, a request such as this is unusual. I, usually when there's a, a referendum question brought forward, it's for a pressing issue, something that this community wants to know, whether it's school bonding or this, no smoking estate, that referendum. Um, the cost would, would be minimal, there would be an additional publication cost depending on the length of the question, but to put more print on the ballot wouldn't increase the ballot cost.
Isn't, aren't, isn't the, um, I guess the, um, proposal is to have people write things on the ballot, is that right, or?
No, I think, um, Mr. Rahela, he came in af, he is here if you want to, if you want to ask him. I think that the request was that the council form a committee and develop some questions, um, that are non-binding to place on the April ballot. But I do want to point out, um, if you decide to go with this route, there are some deadlines. We would have to have those approved at the February fifteenth, actually sixteenth council meeting because, uh, we have to turn those questions over to the Douglas County Clerk on February twenty-third in order for them to be printed on the ballot. So, there, there's just a short timeframe if you were going to go ahead with this.
So, what, what was that deadline again?
Um, February twenty-second is the last day that it can be approved to go to the, the county clerk on the twenty-third, so our next council meeting is February sixteenth. The closest to that deadline is February sixteen.
Thanks, Terry.
Councilor Dahlbeck?
Well, isn't he asking for us to form a committee?
Uh, the motion before us is to receive and file.
Right. So, isn't that, but I mean-
Is there a discussion on that motion, I guess?
Oh, okay, no. But what we're trying to do is, um, he wants to put this on the ballot, we still have forums, so.
Well.
Mr. Rahela is here if you want to ask him the questions.
Councilor Merzick has his light on.
Actually, I was just going to ask if, if the gentleman is here, if he could just explain exactly what his intent is here, and then it would set our questions to rest.
Allow you three minutes to speak to the issue, according to our rules.
Um, I, I sent this, uh, communication to everybody just so they could get a feel of, uh, you know, when I was on, I don't want to make this a campaign issue, but when I'm out there, people have all kinds of questions, you know, people are unhappy with, you know, property taxes just routinely going up and up and up. But, um, earlier today, um, this is a specific instance, I don't want to come up with the questions, but it was intended for a committee to take questions from the public and pick from the, the best ones there. Uh, but on, uh, Channel Ten today, I saw Greg Merz had make a comment about, um, this period about going without a mayor would be a good experience to, uh, test whether we could do without a mayor and go with a city manager. So, I think a question, I, I think something like that should be decided by the people and not ten people on the city council.
That question was put out for referendum previously, city manager question, just to let you know.
I was late.
Sorry.
But that's just an example.
Okay. Is there further discussion of questions? If not, we'll call the question. Hold for your say aye. Oh, Mark Craig, you need some?
No, it's okay. Uh, I guess I, uh, comment, I, I don't want, I wouldn't, I think it would be appropriate to discuss this a little more, it sounds like it could potentially be a good idea. You know, I know time is not on our side here, you said February sixteenth, is that correct?
That's, that would be the next.
Right.
That's the end of the next meeting.
But maybe, maybe for the next election cycle, it can be something that we could do, uh, if there's no monetary impact. Uh, if we receive and file this today, it's just going to go away, right? It's like it never happened. We can bring it up again at a future date.
Certainly can. Anyone can bring up this, anyone that wishes to bring an issue before a council certainly can do so, and, uh, we also have a section in our agenda as business by public, anyone wishing to bring an issue to, uh, this council usually is considered welcome to do so. Uh, I guess we have, we've never refused anyone the opportunity that I know of.
Um, I think our job becomes a little easier with, uh, we have Shelley from the Telegram that's more than anxious to, you know, make, uh, community participation, uh, easier for us, and, uh, you know, of course, we have Channel Ten here, so, uh, I don't, I think the question of having interest in this, uh, once it would be published or made available, I think, uh, you'd pick a department, I think that department head would get fun with a bunch of calls. That's just my feel.
Councilor Henry?
Yeah, just a quick comment, I guess I kind of wonder about it a little bit, I can kind of picture in my mind, my, you know, for me going in and voting and seeing the people that, you know, want to vote for, and then a whole slug of questions, and then kind of what pops in my mind is all these people that call me on the telephone and ask a lot of questions, and it kind of, it kind of irritates me, and, and I kind of wonder if this would be a good thing or whether it would kind of irritate people. I know when I go into, if I go in to vote, I just go in to vote, I don't, I'm not there to provide, you know, a lot of information about how I feel about different things. If it's, if it's a referendum, that's fine, you know, you know, somebody's, uh, I guess a referendum is kind of similar to that, but you, you got a lot of backing for a referendum, but if it's just kind of a, you know, is it just kind of a information gathering type of thing, uh, I don't know how the voters would feel about it, whether they'd be real positive or not, I just kind of wonder about it.
Councilor Dahlbeck?
Well, isn't this the same, we have forums when we have elections, we, the public comes together and asks these questions, and the press is there, and they print them up, it's the same thing, you ask a question of the mayor candidate or the council candidate, and that's where you get your questions and answers from. It isn't going to be any good to put it on the ballot, people can come, the public can come to these forums. That's where you want to get it out at, with the public at the forums.
Well, the good thing about putting it on a ballot is you have maximum participation. You have the public that cares about this city, the public that votes, and the public will go, turn out and answer, you know, directly. You can call it a survey, or you can call it a poll, but I call it a ballot, a valid representation of the public.
Councilor Olson?
This president would like to call a question.
Motion made. Call the question, again, no further comment. We'll call the question to receive and file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Motion made by-
Can I just, can I just make one announcement, just a reminder that the, um, spring, uh, primary election on February fifteenth will move the council meeting to the sixteenth, and the same for December, or, I'm sorry, April fifth, it'll move it to the sixth.
Motion was made, uh, adjourned by whom? Tom? With Council Bridge, and seconded by Councilor Dahlbeck, I'm assuming.